Welcome everyone to the City of Middletown Planning Board July 5, 2023 meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to do some quick housekeeping for our transcriptionist. Board members absent this evening are Mr. McCormick, Ms. Witt, and Ms. Hewson. Present this evening, we have Building Inspector Welch, Building Inspector Martinez, Planning Board Attorney Rich Krogan, Planning Board Engineer John Zersowski. Not getting closer? Thank you. First on the agenda this evening will be approval of the June 7, 2023 minutes of a motion by Mr. Higby. I need a second by Mr. Britto. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, just a reminder to all applicants this evening, we have four members present. That is a quorum, but you'll need a unanimous vote of four members to get your approval. I'll mention it to you again, I'll explain it to you when you come up. If anyone is not going to vote for you, that means you might have to come back next month or be declined. We'll work that out as we call you up and get there, all right? I also want to point out that anyone here for the first time appearance is considered a preliminary hearing, and the Planning Board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. First on the agenda, Yankel Littner, 48 to 54 North Street. This is for a six-month extension. It's from the owner of Middletown Apartments LLC, 545 Broadway, Brooklyn, New York, 11206, Project 48 to 54 North Street, Middletown, New York. To whom it may concern, Middletown Apartments LLC is requesting an extension for six months from the Planning Board for Project 48 to 54 North Street. Project got delayed due to financial reasons. We look forward to hearing from you soon. Thank you, Yankel Littner. We'll need a motion to accept the six-month extension. Motion?
Have a question. When did we originally approve this?
This is the second, this is the second six-month, so it'd be over a year ago.
Gotcha. Thank you.
No problem.
There's no limit. There's no limit to the amount of extensions we can give someone?
Well, honestly, that's a gray area. We normally go about three. On the third one, we more or less, I don't want to use the word warn, but inform the applicant that they need to make some type of movement on their project.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
They have to provide an explanation as to what the reason is. Just, you know, an extension for the sake of an extension is not acceptable.
So I need a motion to accept the extension. Mr. Higby, I need a second. Mr. Britto, discussion. Do you have a question, Mr. Madden? All right, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda, Eric Suen, 18 to 24 East Main Street, Packing and Shipping Store. Please step forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
State your name for the record.
Eric Suen.
And what do you plan on doing, sir?
Opening a shipping and packing store retail-wise, so basically offering services such as FedEx, UPS, and any other international shipping services.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings?
Oh.
Okay, in that case, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Tu, do we have anything in writing? Anybody on the telephone? Thank you. I'm going to go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
I just want to make sure we have the owner's endorsement, because it's not part of my package.
I own the property as well.
Oh, okay, just a different name, I noticed.
Yeah. The company for the property itself is under an LLC, and then when I open the shipping and packing store, I'll probably get another, another name for that.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
I'm just going to check on the hours of operation. I have Monday through Saturday, 9:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Krogan, we still don't need an owner's endorsement if it's an LLC of a different?
No, if he's the member of the LLC, no.
Okay, gotcha.
Go to our Building Department real quick. No one has any issues here? Mr. Welch, no issues? Okay. I'll go back to the public one more time. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. I'll go to the board one more time for questions, comments, and concerns.
Yes. Is there space for trucks to be parking? If you're having UPS, FedEx, and other delivery companies, I mean, is it one pickup a day?
I believe it'll be about one or two pickups a day, depending on the trucking company that we're, that's coming. I don't have parking space for them, but I noticed in the front of the store, there is a loading-only area, so that's all the space that we'll probably be using.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Anyone else from the board? All right, just want to remind you, sir, that if we have a vote, it has to be unanimous. We only have four people here, that it does constitute a quorum, but, so I'm confident. If you're confident, then we'll proceed with the vote.
Sure.
On the resolution.
Absolutely.
Okay. On the resolution, for 18 to 24 East Main Street, a packing and shipping store, this approval is subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits, follow the permitting process, codes and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York if applicable. Hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 9 a.m. to 6 p.m. Anything submitted within your application will become part of the record, and the applicant will be held to and followed through on. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Basically, if you don't get your shop up and running within a six-month period, you have to send us a letter of extension with a reason, so that you can continue your approval.
Sure.
Okay? Whereas this application is located in the DMU zone, therefore, applicants must submit and receive approval from the Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection, Subsection 407-3, Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. Therefore, applicants must receive approval from the Architectural Review Board on all facade work, exterior work in general, and exterior signage. Basically, whatever sign you plan on putting on the side of your building, it has to go through the Architectural Review Board.
Understood.
And therefore, the Planning Board will waive parking regulations. So, I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Britto, I need a, any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you, and see to DPW.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda, we have Christina Crump, 278 North Street, a convenience store. Good evening.
How are you doing, Mr. Chairman? How are you doing?
Good, yourself?
Fine, thank you.
Thank you. Just state your name for the record.
Christina R. Crump.
And what you plan on doing?
I plan on opening a convenience store, like a bodega. I am from Middletown, I was actually born here. I see Middletown grow, and I want to grow with it. But, so, I want to do a convenience store. It's Monday through Sunday, 6 a.m. to 11 p.m. With the convenience store, we're going to sell household supplies, also personal, personal items, chips, soda, other snacks, food that we can put in like a hot box. There's not going to be any cooking. Also, what Lotto, beer, and tobacco we would like to sell, in addition to like Western Union, if, if we can, but that's it.
That was Monday through Sunday. What were those hours again?
6 a.m. to 11 p.m., sir.
6 a.m. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Going to, Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings? Yes, okay. In that case, we're going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to step forward and comment on this application, please step forward. Ms. Tu, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the telephone? Okay, I'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Mr. Chairman, she said there'll be prepared food for sale, but not cooked on the premises, but in a warmer.
Yes, sir.
Does that have to run by Theron for anything?
Well, I think since it'll be under, as we always do on the Middletown Fire Department, anything she plans on doing on there, they'll, they'll review with you.
Okay.
Then they'll let you know what you can and can't do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, so that'll be under the Middletown Fire Department review. We will add no cooking in the resolution, just so.
No, sir. No, sir.
You understand?
I do.
And there's no alcohol either, right?
Um, we did apply for a tobacco, Lotto, and beer license.
Okay, well, that will fall under as the, that'll be under the New York State.
State Liquor Authority.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
When I read off that part of the resolution, that means anything that has to do with the state of New York, you'll have to get properly licensed before you can start doing that work.
Absolutely.
And that will go the same thing for any beer or wine or any alcohol you try to do, you'll have to go through the New York State Liquor Authority to do that.
Absolutely.
Okay? Now, I don't know, do we need to premise that in the resolution?
You can premise it that it would be subject to.
Okay, that's what we're going to do anyway. Okay. Any board members have any questions?
Parking? Do we have to waive parking?
It's not in the DMU. It's a C2 zone, so she has some street parking, and it's kind of at the Planning Board's discretion. It's typical old school, she's on a street, and she's properly zoned.
Sir, it'll be an and now, it's not, we don't request tables or chairs, it's buy what you have to buy and vacate.
And make an assumption that where she's located, she'll get a lot of walk-in traffic, and she'll get some vehicle traffic also.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yep, no, no, that's fine.
Do prepared hot foods still have to fall under the jurisdiction of the Department of Health, even if they're not cooked on site?
Possibly. So the part where the, we state, County of Orange, any cooking you plan on doing, prepared or otherwise, pre-prepared or otherwise, you should notify the Department of Health, Orange County.
Yes, I actually have looked into the licenses, and that will be done.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the board? I'll go back to the public. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay. Board members, and any other thoughts? Any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to try to give you a resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. On the resolution, for Christina Crump, 278 North Street, a convenience store, this approval is subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, Department of Health, and the State of New York, dealing with your, any beer, liquor, and/or cigarettes, anything that needs to be licensed by the state of New York if applicable. Also, subject to hours of operation, in this case, will be Monday through Sunday, 6 a.m. to 11 p.m.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you can just add no cannabis sales, since she will be doing tobacco?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, we can add, as per the City of Middletown's code and ordinances, there'll be no cannabis sales.
Absolutely. Understood.
All right, and anything that has been submitted in your application becomes part of the record that you must be held to and follow through on.
Absolutely.
In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months of the completed, and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, special use permit shall be null and void. If you have problems going forward, and within a six-month period, you cannot get you, your business up and running, you must send a letter to us for an extension to keep your approval good, all right?
Yes, sir.
Not in the DMU, so we don't have to waive parking. Parking will be considered adequate, and that's it. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. Higby? Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next on our agenda, Feintang College, 65 Seward Avenue, classrooms, an auditorium, and a bakery. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Anna Chan.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
And she'll be giving us a presentation here shortly. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings? Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone? Anyone present here wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Tu, do we have anything in writing? Do we have anybody on the telephone? All right, please present. Go ahead. Thank you.
Before you present, just by way of background, Mr. Chairman, why don't you explain the relationship with City of Middletown and this project?
Okay.
So the board understands.
This is a longstanding project in the City of Middletown. The City of Middletown has an agreement with Feintang College to meet certain goals. There's a schedule, so that they continue to work together because the state's involved in this for land, all right? The Middletown, the City of Middletown is involved in land, and the college is purchasing, leasing, whatever the combination is, is. As of now, the college and the city, they have met their goals. They're on schedule, and they're following the agreement, okay? So sometimes it seems a little strange when we have these projects, when they come to us, because they are segmented, unfortunately, and that's because the city does not own all the property at the moment. The state still has some control of it, so if it seems like we're doing something that's out of the ordinary, we kind of are, but it's within the schedule and the agreement between the city, the state, and the college. Did I miss anything?
No. It's just there, there is this outside agreement that exists, and they're operating within those parameters.
So today, we have an application for 65 Seward Avenue. It's a vacant building right now, and it, we'd like to use it for classrooms, a bakery, and also for an auditorium.
Thank you.
That's much better.
And on the site plan that you have in front of you, this is actually a site plan of the campus, and there is, there are drawings of where the existing parking is for each of the buildings. And based on our calculations, the architect has calculated for, based on the use for each of the buildings, that the parking is adequate for the use of the buildings. There's a table on the, towards the bottom right-hand side of the page, where it lists the buildings, the current use, the required parking, the existing parking, and the proposed parking for the campus.
Is the bakery open to the public, or is that?
It's meant to be for the patrons of the, of the campus.
Is that for the campus use?
Yes. So it's campus use only?
Campus use only.
Same with the auditorium?
Right. Correct.
Will you be hosting events in the auditorium?
Right now, actually, for the actual construction or the renovation that's being planned, we're looking to do it in phases, just to have a big open space or smaller classrooms for the space, but eventually, there was a plan to have a seated auditorium in the future, and for that, there may be events that we could open to the public for, for example, a music concert by students, so mainly school activities.
And that's where part of the parking situation came up. That's why you'll see a huge parking lot of 454 cars. It's actually, right at the moment, it's city-owned land, that's going to be municipal parking. The city, again, has an agreement with the college that they may develop, the city may develop that as parking, and they'll be able to use that as parking, okay? Again, state property, city property, it's still a lot of things in the works. Any questions from the board so far? I'll go back to the public momentarily. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application? Questions? Concerns? Please step up to the mic. Okay. I don't think the public has any questions. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Walter, any concerns?
Anymore, anything else from our board members? Okay.
I think if there's a, are you going to be, you making stuff in the bakery?
We do, um, yes, the plan is to actually bake.
So the plans would have to be submitted to Department of Health?
Right.
Correct.
Orange County Department of Health.
Absolutely.
Yep, okay.
Department of Health has to have them too.
And Theron, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Board members, anything else? All right, I'm going to, on the resolution, this is an approval for Feintang College, 65 Seward Avenue, classrooms, an auditorium, and a bakery, a bakery to be used on campus for campus use, okay? This approval is subject to the City of Middletown DPW, the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange for the bakery, or any other cooking that's going to be done on site there, and the State of New York if applicable. Now, I don't know if we need hours of operation.
I don't think so, but the one thing I would add is all accessory uses to the existing college.
All the uses are accessories to the existing college, okay? Anything submitted within your application or on your plans becomes part of the record, and you'll be held to it, and you must follow through on, all right? In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, and the applicant will supply said tables through an architect, engineer, or licensed in the state of New York. I just want to hold up just for a second on the hours of operation. I guess they would be what we would call normal educational institutional hours, okay? I just want to add that, so nothing goes on midnight, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning, okay? All right, whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subsection 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of granting of the special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. I think you know that within six months, if you don't start your project, you need to come to us for an extension so that your approval stays active.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Again, as we stated, in the minutes, that this is a collaboration between the city, the college, the state, all is on track with the agreements that have been made, so that the parking and any, anything to do with the properties and the parking is in line with typical code for the City of Middletown, all right? I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Britto, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have some preliminary hearings only, not for any action, but for future presentation and possible action at a date not yet determined. First on our list would be Middletown Commons, 203 to 231 Dulson Avenue, mixed-use commercial slash residential.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your names for the record.
My name is Caleb Carr. I'm out in Buckenacres.
Joseph Thompson, architect for the project, here with Caleb, the engineer. It's been quite some time since we've presented to the board, probably about two years. There has since been a lot of site development and resolution of engineering issues, coordination of utilities since our last presentation. The program has largely stayed the same for Middletown Commons. It's a proposed six-story, mixed-use building, 150 units, with a ground floor that has both common and public amenities, as well as a separate standalone retail building. What I'll do is I'll turn it over to Caleb for updates on developments as we've last presented to the board, and then back to the board for any, any discussion or dialogue.
Thank you.
As you stated, the, the plan has went through a lot of, well, we went back and forth with Orange and Rockland twice now, and basically, they want us to stay completely out of their easement, and so that's what the most recent plan has shifted the building farther to the north, to try to keep it completely out of their easement, to try to relieve the comments that they've had with the board. But the site parking has also changed, or the, this other single-story building that we're proposing has actually been reduced in size, but is still considered retail. I know parking requirement-wise, we're still, we're, I think the required is 479 with what's on our index sheet and parking requirements, but we're providing 490 at the moment.
Okay.
Do you have a letter indicating that the utility company has approved this plan now?
We do not have that currently. We need to respond back to the utility company with their most recent comments. They haven't seen this most recent plan as of yet.
Okay.
Okay, so I've had this plan in front of me for a few months now. I'm the, the city engineer for the planning board. We've been going back and forth, and one of the things that keeps coming up is the, the building is in a C3 zone, multifamily dwelling. Part of the requirements of that is that the first floor be used specifically for commercial applications, and as it's designed right now, and the first floor is only half commercial, the backside of the building, as you see it on the plan, is all, the uses are specifically for the resident- are specifically for the residents of the building, they're not open to the public. Typically, they, according to the code, 475 12C, Sections 8 and 9, they need to be, they need a waiver from the common council for this to be allowed.
Okay.
And if it becomes open to commercial, then this will impact the parking. So I asked them to come in here early and have this discussion with you to see if you're open to this idea, and would refer them to the common council, so that we can resolve the number of parking spaces before they spend any more time working out. I had numeral, numerous comments on the, the plans themselves, and they do need to prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is very costly as far as engineering goes. So before they take that next step, I just want the board to kind of hear what they want to do.
Okay. That's reasonable. What would be the difference in the parking if they were, if they had to be totally commercial? From the first floor?
I don't know the exact square footage, but half the first floor, I mean, how much is the first floor? Right now, that, there's no parking associated with it because it's subject to the, it's, it's for the residents of the building, not for people coming in for commercial space. So the, the parking calculation, I guess it depends on what they put there, as far as what the parking.
John, does it require us to make a recommendation to the common council or a referral?
I think you, a referral. You probably can make a recommendation if you want, but it would be a referral.
So presently, their, their parking calculation is based on half of the first floor being commercial?
Correct.
So I guess my question would be, what would your parking requirement be if it was total commercial on the first floor? He has 490, right? Right now?
490 is what we have right now. I mean, we're required, for what the calculations that we currently have is 479, so we're actually providing a little bit more, but I mean, I don't.
I'd just be curious how that would impact, if it was totally commercial.
Now, on their, in their defense, I mean, it is a sea of parking, and it's possible maybe they can bank some parking spaces for future development if ne, if necessary, but I mean, we need to work this out ahead of time before we, we dwelve into.
Yep.
Developing these plans.
And that's why we're here this evening.
Yes.
John, they're able to add parking if needed?
They could squeeze it in here and there, but they're getting tight, so.
Yeah, because we are, we do have wetlands around too, that we're trying to not disturb more than a tenth of an acre, to make sure that we don't have to get any kind of permit, or actually, the Army Corps of Engineers won't even respond to us if we keep under that limit, so.
Just for an order of magnitude on the parking differential, the, the ground floor footprint and round numbers is approximately 24,000 square feet, so if it were approximately 50% commercial, 50% tenant amenity currently, if that additional 12,000 square foot, let's say, were to be all retail, could be impacted if it were a restaurant or a higher-density use, that would come out to, at one space per 150 square feet, 80 additional parking spaces. So it's about a 15% impact on parking, if we were required to have entirely public commercial uses on the ground floor.
Okay. I think it becomes down to a matter of concept, what, what we're willing to discuss and what the common council may be willing to discuss. Now that we know that, we'll have to move on that. Mr. Higbee, do you have?
No, I just, so just to clarify, as the plan that you have now, the front part would be retail or public, and then the back would be?
Exactly, we have, we have different amenities for the.
Tenant amenities.
Exactly, gym.
I know, I wouldn't have any issue with that.
Yeah. I, I think what's, what we. Obviously, the common council. What we like about this design is it would offer these amenities to the, the population, so it'd be a more desirable place to live in. It also alleviates the need to, you know, have like a parking-under-the-building type configuration on the first floor, like you often see. We're able to actually really nicely set this building on a landscaped area, surrounded by, you know, open, open green and paver surfaces, as opposed to having a, a direct approach by automobile, or parking under the building with internal garages. So it's, it's something we'd like to preserve, but, you know, obviously need to coordinate with the boards and have the city's input on this concept.
Yes, sir.
I would be a lot more hesitant if this was in the DMU, but in the location that they're proposing, I, I would support the plan that's being proposed.
Okay. Excellent. You agree, Mr. Britto? Okay. I, I have no, I have no issue referring it to the common council to get their opinion, to do, as far as the code is concerned, so this way you, gentlemen, can get a decision one way or the other. I have no issue with that.
I mean, it seems like we need their, they need to make their decision, right? Because of the code?
Yeah, I, we can't just arbitrarily say, yeah, it's okay, even though we agree with it. We may like it, and we should get them as our.
And what's the difference if we give a recommendation versus a referral? Because, I mean, I think as a, speaking of all of us here, it sounds like we would make a recommendation that.
It would just be a recommendation that the board is in favor.
Okay.
Of the plan as presented.
I would say we would be happy.
The common council is still free to do as they choose, but it's just a recommendation of the board.
Yeah.
And you can put that in a motion.
Location of the project, the project itself, the planning board has no problem with referring it to, or recommending it to the common council.
If the board would be willing to do that, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Need a resolution or?
A motion.
A motion, even though it's a preliminary?
Yep.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we put a recommendation, for a recommendation into common council for the first floor to be half commercial and half ten, tenant.
Amenities.
Amenities.
Okay, fine. Under motion of Mr. Higbee, second, Mr. Britto, discussion. Roll call, Mr. Madden?
Again, my support is because this is not in the DMU, but yes.
Understood. Very good. Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we'll make contact.
So Martina will draft a letter saying it's the recommendation of the board, that the common council be referred this project with the recommendation from the planning board.
And obviously, it just follows this, not everybody in this zone, it follows the address of.
This project in particular.
The uniqueness of it.
Yeah. In fact, we probably should put that in the letter, Martina, due to the, the, the project and the location of the project, zoning, that, that's why we are recommending it.
And uniqueness.
Pardon me?
I feel like the last time you were here presenting to us, you had separated the, the separate retail site was apart from the main project. They're back together as, as being developed at the same time now?
No, there is another separate standalone building that we haven't yet prepared the architecture for. I think by the next meeting, we will have that. It's down on the lower-left corner here. It's, it's set up to potentially be six tenants, so what we would do is develop something that'd be very complimentary to the primary building. We wanted to get some of the, the potential issues resolved with the primary building before delving into that further, in case that size of that building, or scale got infected in any way by the parking, by the overall layout. You know, that could be sacrificed, but preferably not.
Thank you.
And that building will be what, a secondary building?
It's all, it's all, oh, it's all currently proposed as retail, so it's actually a larger, like if it was to be offices, it would be half as much parking as currently it's retail, which is quite a bit.
And, and would that affect your parking calculation, or is that?
Factored in.
It's factored in.
That factored in already?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good.
They're also very close to the town away we on the border, so it will need a county referral at some point. I don't know if it's appropriate to go now to county, if they need to get that, disapproved by the council, I guess.
I don't think it, it's ready yet, because the common council has to give their okay.
Right.
So it may be premature.
Right. I just wanted to bring that up, that it will need to go.
Thank you. Yes, it will be, eventually have to go to, to the town of Walchville. Okay? Any other questions, guys? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen, we'll, we'll proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Comfort Inn, 22 to 52 James P. Kelly Way Hotel.
Yeah, good evening. Again, it's, it's been a while since we were in front of you. My name is John Fuller. I'm a professional engineer representing the applicant, who is with me tonight, Marty Noack, for a proposed Comfort Inn Hotel on James P. Kelly Way. We had done a preliminary submittal a little over a year ago for the particular parcel and development. At that time, it was focused on strictly the two-acre parcel, which is a vacant piece on, on James P. Kelly Way. Since that time, Marty's acquired what was the old Red Barn property, which has been vacant. And so our proposal for you now, which again is preliminary, is to incorporate usage of that Red Barn property, specifically the back area, for additional parking for the hotel. I know we had previously represented the Wingate Hotel here, and there was a lot of concern about what was the parking representation or calculation within the ordinance. What we've tried to achieve with the current configuration is one space per sleeping room. In order to do that, we would look to utilize the rear of the, the Red Barn property as a contiguous parking area. Probably have, we'll propose cross easements between the properties at the appropriate time, but utilize that for additional overflow parking for what would be the Comfort Inn here at this location. The building footprint is essentially the same that we had shown you last year. It is a proposed four-story hotel, and it would have 131 rooms. We are not proposing a banquet hall like we had done on the other project. This would be strictly just 131 rooms, with the necessary amenities associated with that hotel, like a, an indoor pool, and conference rooms and stuff like that, but it would not be a banquet facility. So we, the configuration, we look to use the same entrance, entrance that we had proposed previously, which is opposite Schindler Court, and what we had presented at that time, and we'd like to continue to propose, is a right-in, right-out from that location due to the congestion opposite Schindler Court, which currently has traffic lights that just flash. And then we propose a second entrance, which would come off the rear of the Red Barn property at, at this location. We will, we have preliminary architectural, which has been established for the hotel, which will submit certainly in, in future packages, but it's a proposed four-story structure, the Comfort Inn brand. And we wanted to come back before you with the, this latest update, before we proceed with all the engineering associated with developing the site plan. So we wanted to seek any input that you have this evening, so we can proceed accordingly, so.
One of the biggest concerns was the power lines at one time? Was there an issue?
That was the Wingate one, yeah.
Okay.
And certainly, there are, very similarly, these have O and R easements, certainly not the level of power associated with the, the Wingate property, which was the power authority. These are O and R easements. You know, not knowing exactly what the, the level of coverage is, it's much less than what the, what the other property had.
The Red Barn, is that still going to be used?
So yeah, so the intention, in talking with Marty, and I'll let him speak for himself, is, is to ultimately find an occupant, a renter, to, to utilize that building, yeah.
So how are we going to calculate parking required for the Red Barn versus the excess parking?
Well, we'll, we'll certainly need to provide that in the site plan, an estimate of a commercial business. Right now, I, he's had limited inquiries, but whatever would be the most conservative parking need for that building, we would provide that, make sure that, that that's identified for that, that place of business.
And that does have parking in the front, too, right? The Red Barn?
It does.
Some, I mean?
Yeah, so it does. It has parking in the front. In fact, all of its existing parking is in the front of the building. The rear, I think, was used mainly for loading, unloading. But we'll identify the most restrictive, make sure that there's sufficient parking to satisfy any future need once a renter is identified.
How many do you have existing on the front lot?
On this?
Nope, on the bottom.
I'm sorry.
Where initially the Comfort Inn is going to be. Yeah. How many parking spots are there?
Well, we have about, just, I, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's about half, which would be about, just around 50 on this property. And so what we wanted to do, because it's 131-room hotel, we wanted to try to achieve that. I think we're currently showing 129. I, I certainly can add a, a few additional spaces, but we wanted to try to make sure that we were one-to-one, which I think was a request by the board last year.
Yes.
So the only way we can achieve that is by using the parking at the rear of the Red Barn, which is currently just a large vacant area.
John, have you seen the plans at all?
I haven't seen them yet.
Okay.
I just, I know that the easements have been a problem all along, getting any power company to respond. Do you have any idea how much grading is going to be underneath these?
Minimal. So the area in, in the Red Barn is complete, well, I don't want to say completely flat, but it's generally very flat. So the grading would be minimal there. There's a little bit of a hump right here, which we're proposing for the driveway, we'll discuss that with the utility company, and then this area is generally flat. So the amount of grading, we're trying to minimize as much as possible. The problem with the Wingate property is we're proposing significant grading, and their requirements are substantial.
Yes. Okay.
So, and, and obviously, O and R is a little bit different entity, and, and so we're hopeful. There is evidence along both of these power lines of other adjoining properties and properties throughout the line that do have parking surfaces underneath them, so we think it's, it'll be a reasonable request.
Yeah, it's just getting them to respond right now seems to be a problem. But yes, you're right, there is significant parking under the lines, when there isn't any substantial grading. You always get into even low voltage, lower voltage lines still have quite a arc to them if you get too close.
Understood, yeah. So the building is completely out of the easement. The only thing we would propose under the easement would be just parking. And no parking directly under the, the lines that run along this property line. There will be some parking here, but again, the adjoining properties also have parking currently that exists today, so we're hopeful that it, it's a reasonable request. This, this property has parking, and then this property also has parking under the same line.
Okay. Mr. Madden?
Just because we haven't seen these plans at all, trying to get my bearings here, the orange is the outline of the proposed hotel.
That's the building.
And all the grade areas are proposed parking.
That's parking, correct.
And in the center, you have a triangular parking structure, and then you have a white situ, you have a white, no, down lower. What's in the center of that parking lot?
Here? Oh, here?
Yeah.
Just landscaped area. Yeah, this would be a, a sidewalk for patrons to, to walk in as they walk towards the portico share. Yeah, so this is just.
And these are two separate parcels?
Currently, yes, they're two separate parcels. So we're not looking to combine them, it would be cross easements for parking purposes.
And Red Barn is at the top of your diagram?
Yeah, this would, this is the Red Barn building, yep. We're calling it Red Barn, but it's obviously went out.
We all understand?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, just like Andy Liger. These are separate parcels.
And are you proposing like a sidewalk from that one to the, like right by your finger there?
Yeah, so it's hard to see, but right here, this is, this would be a sidewalk walking across. There's a couple, we'll need to make some amendments to the plan, certainly, to show like cross walkways and stuff like that, but the intent is to provide enough sidewalks that the patrons can easily navigate to the building. You know, the idea would be that they'll be able to go to the portico share, drop off, and then go park.
And then if you had to use the back-loading dock of the Red Barn for your tenant, do you, would they come from the front, or they would come through that parking lot?
Well, I think the intention, whatever the, the tenant ultimately is, will certainly determine their need, but there's, we believe that there should, for most commercial uses, there should be enough parking in the front. If we have to identify parking to the rear, we'll do that. If patrons choose to use the driveway for the hotel, I mean, we, we certainly can't stop them, but that's certainly not the purpose.
How would it work with truck drivers? How would it work with truck drivers?
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. Like, is there a loading dock in the back of the Red Barn building?
No.
No, there's no, there's just a regular.
Overhead door.
An overhead door, okay. So like, what if somebody was bringing something into there? Would they go through that lot, or would they come around the building?
They would go through the Comfort Inn lot.
Through the Comfort Inn lot, okay.
I mean, because you get to, between the Red Barn and the next property, it's kind of a narrow space. You can drive a car through there easily.
Okay, we got you, but not a truck.
If you're putting an 18-wheeler in there, it might be a little tight.
But as far as truck drivers staying overnight at the hotel?
Yeah, our existing hotel now, we have truck drivers, and they just take up, seems like several spots. We haven't had a problem with that, and we're one-for-one now with our rooms and our parking spots.
That's the sleep inn. I mean, how often does that happen?
Truckers come typically during the week. You have most of your cars there on the weekend at night, you know, Friday nights and Saturday nights. And a lot of the truckers that we get, you know, we might get one truck night, and it's typically during the week. Most of them sleep in their own trucks. To me, it's a truck that's broken down that would stay.
The upper entrance that you're proposing into the lot would be enter and exit either direction?
We'd like that, yes.
How close is that to the circle?
Roughly, I'm just going to guess, I mean, to the entrance of the right turn of this, that's probably a little over 200 feet. Probably to the circle, it's probably closer to like 350 maybe. I'm just going by the bar scale, but it's probably at least 350. I mean, there's pretty good, at this location, which is what we're proposing, there's pretty good site distance in both directions.
Between the two projects you had proposed, did you ever get as far as a traffic study?
We did a traffic study for Wingate, and we were just talking about that. We can certainly employ the same engineer to do an update for the Comfort Inn.
John, would that be okay?
Yeah, and just updating the existing report with the new hotel should be fine, the new entrances.
I think that would help with Mr. Madden's question, too, as far as the distance and right-hand turns, only left-hand turns.
Yes.
Also. Okay. So, before we have the applicant expend any more money, do we need to hear from the power company first before we move forward, or before they move forward? I mean, we could tell you to move forward, but I'd hate you to.
No, we acknowledge in similar situation with the time that we spent on the Wingate property is, even if we get preliminary communication from the O and R prior to, you know, proceeding in-depth, yeah, I think that's appropriate, and we are willing to do that.
Okay. Is everyone on the board okay with that so far? I mean, in concept, we're good?
Yeah, essentially, that's what we're here tonight. If the concept looks good, the major issues that need to be addressed have been talked about, we're looking to proceed.
I know it's early stages, but can we try to get something to our planning board engineer, just so he can kind of familiarize himself more with the project?
We'll send the preliminary documents to him tomorrow.
Appreciate it. Yep, that'd be a big help. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Nice to see you again. Next on our agenda is 135 North Street, Inc., 135 North Street, mixed-use commercial residential.
Amadou LaPout, Felons or Engineering.
So basically, what we're trying to do here, Dan, this is the old Chase building at 135 North Street. It's currently a four-story bank office building, with the bank being on the first floor, and then at times, they sublet the upper floors for office space. So the intent here for this project is to take that existing building and renovate it for a multi-use residential on the upper floors and commercial space down on the first floor. And then to propose in addition roughly 34,000 square feet directly next to the existing Chase building, for lack of better terms, that would, in essence, mirror the size of it. And additionally, it's an addition on top as well. So it would be taking that four-story building, turning it to a five-story building, and then matching the footprint of that directly next to it. On top of that, we're proposing a museum building, an adjacent structure in this right-hand corner, that would house a media museum focusing on art and technology and the integration of those two, especially here in Middletown. So as it stands, we're proposing 133 parking spots for it and proposing 54 units. It'll be 36 total one-bedrooms and 18 total two-bedrooms. So this project, I mean, to us, it feels great, because this has been an underutilized building in Middletown for the last 10 years or so, as Chase has left the building gradually. You've seen the upper floors start to vacate as well. So this project, in its hopes, will take an old, at this point, derelict building in the heart of Middletown and bring it back for a multi-use purpose we feel would be very beneficial to the city.
Can you tell me the number of apartments again? I'm sorry.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, and what was the breakdown?
We had 36 for one-bedroom and 18 for the two-bedroom. All of those apartments, all the one-bedrooms are over 750 square feet, and all the two-bedrooms are over 850 square feet by fairly large margin.
Which is by the code?
By the DMU code, yeah.
Can you just give us some perspective on that site plan that you're showing us? Where is North Street? Where is the existing building?
So this is the existing building here. This highlighted would be the new building, and this highlighted would be the adjacent building right across.
North Street is on the left side?
Correct, North Street's right here.
And you're saying that you're going to have a new structure that's built, you said "next to," but it's actually to the rear? Is it to the rear?
To the rear, yeah.
Okay, to the rear from the North Street perspective?
Exactly, in relation to North Street, it would be in the rear.
And going up over the top of the existing building, adding an additional floor?
Exactly. I mean, architecturally speaking, the language would be a new building that is appreciative of the old building, that wraps it all in a way.
Is there an exit to the rear street?
Correct, right here. That is Grove Street behind it there. And you'd also have access on Grove Street to enter the building, or enter the lot as Currently on the lot, we have one entrance from North Street, so we're proposing is keep that one entrance for North Street. I know this corner over here is Candle Brothers and can be an incredibly busy corner during new points of the day, so promoting another, we're providing another exit here, just seems like it's going to cause another traffic headache for the downtown Middletown. So this project benefits a lot from pushing all the traffic over to Grove Street, but...
So you're going to have entrance only from north?
Entrance only from North Street, and then all exit on Grove Street.
What's your proposed use for the ground floor?
Proposed use for the ground floor, this side here will be parking, so you have parking underneath the building. And then the other proposed use, it's going to be commercial space. What exactly it'll be is still to be, still to be seen. We know this space will be a museum space. That's, will be one of the drawing points and the highlights of the whole project, is providing this.
And that's also a new building?
That is a new building, yes.
Okay, because I don't, where's like the pop-out on the existing building? I see it in this picture, but...
Oh, the little, the one-story pop-out?
Yeah.
That's this portion right here.
Oh, okay. And that you're keeping?
That'll keep, that'll stay, yes.
And what is that going to be?
That'll be part of this commercial space down on the first floor.
First floor, commercial.
How many square feet of commercial space is it?
It's roughly 7,000. It's 6,912.
One storefront for the commercial space?
As of right now, one storefront, we'd like one tenant, one larger tenant for that space, but as the project goes on, there's potential that it's multiple tenants. It's still a little early on to see exactly how that space works out. With a project of this size, we were more concerned in getting it in front of you guys and having everyone be able to take a look at it.
That's like really tall ceilings, right? I haven't been in there since I was a kid, but...
It is really tall ceiling. So what actually happens on it is, in the original lobby of the Chase building, there's, it's a two-story space, and then you get the third floor on top of that, which is actually the second floor.
Gotcha, so you were going to fill that in.
And then there's a mezzanine level around it all, so we just connect the dots and cut down on that space.
And the museum is technically on a different lot, or that's all?
It's on the same lot.
That is, wow.
It's on the same lot.
How large is that proposed space?
Roughly 10,000 square feet. More than two floors, three, it's to be decided whether or not it's two stories or three stories, but we don't really want to do anything above 10,000.
And what was the museum, what is the, what type of museum?
It's media and technology, so it's not going to be a traditional art gallery, where you're going to see paintings hung up on walls. It's really more about visual displays and doing sort of a media. It could double as a gallery space down in the future, or an event space if someone wanted to rent it out, the city, if anyone wanted to move meetings to 135 North Street. But as it stands right now, it's just meant to be a more contemporary art museum.
Part of the overall issue is parking. Every time we talk about a space, you have to associate a parking space with it, because even though it's a DMU zone, they're creating their own hardship, so they have to provide parking, number of spots, okay?
And what is the code for like, is a one-bedroom, is one spot per?
No, 1.75.
1.75.
Even for a one-bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay, but it would be up to us if we said, hey, you know, we're thinking that they only need one and a half for one-bedroom? No, that's...
They have to provide for that parking. Since they're expanding the footprint of the building.
Yep.
They're creating their own hardship, so we can't waive the parking.
Gotcha. And how are you with parking with the retail space? I mean, you know the codes?
With the retail space, as we calculated it here, we have 66 spaces required, and we have 133 provided. I would be honest, I think 66 is a little bit low in terms of parking requirements on all that, especially what we just talked about with the requirements for a one-bedroom, two-bedroom.
Yeah, I don't think that's correct. I think your calculation's off.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Yeah, actually, he's got it written in there, yeah, because we have that plan upstairs.
One space for dwelling unit is what we calculated. It was calculated, one space per dwelling unit. Yeah.
We'll bump that up to 1.75.
So for this project, parking has always been the main concern. I mean, one of the aspects that, I mean, this building is in that, call it a sea of parking in downtown, the Coney Island and the bus station is right next door, and there is ample spots over in that area.
You have to provide the parking on-site.
We definitely have parking on-site for tenants themselves. We can satisfy every tenant in the building with this parking spot, with some to spare.
Well, you have to have 1.75 parking spots for one-bedroom.
Sure.
Two spots for two-bedroom. You have 7,000 square feet of commercial, it's one spot per 150. On the museum, I believe it was 80-seat museum, and it would be one spot for every eight seats. So you would need 10.
We'd need 10 there.
Right, that's correct.
For the tenants, correct, but this is your way off.
This is, this is where it's...
Does this count for any, yeah, that's like 99 spaces for your, all your apartments? I believe it's around 99 spaces.
I need the exact answer.
Is that right?
Yeah. I have 63 for one-bedroom and 36 for two-bedroom.
Yeah, so plus 12 is 111.
Yes, we didn't even know you had the retail space.
Yeah, but that's not including the retail.
Well, we didn't even calculate that, because we didn't even see it on here. So is there another 7,500, 7,000 on retail space also?
About 7,000 in retail space.
So that's divided by 150, what's 47 spots?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven spots.
Forty-seven.
So now you're getting to the point of 147.
146.
Plus eight for the museum.
Plus 10 for the museum.
Ten for the museum.
So 156 would be needed.
You're at 133.
Yeah, and actually, if you count these, I think you got 135, but that's beside the point. It's only plus or minus two.
So you're only like 20 spots off.
Yeah, so we're starting with 20 spots off. With all this on the lot.
The issue really comes, we blow it out of the water, and you get to your retail space, and the 7,000 retail space.
And that's counting that square footage, too?
Yes, that's part of that there.
Because that's kind of like separate.
Because we have this portion off for space for the tenants. It's tenant space, whether or not it's a little gym, lobby, mailroom.
Okay, and that's not included in your 7,000?
No, that would be included in, that just becomes amenity space for the tenants.
Where's the bakery? Is that in the 7,000?
Bakery sits over here. The bakery is the 7,000.
Yeah, well, see, that's where it becomes confusing, because you have the bakery spaced out by states, which is probably correct, okay? And then what happened is, we just heard 7,000 square feet for retail.
That's right.
That blew it out of the floor, okay? So you have to kind of, you kind of have to tighten up what you're doing in here, because this is a project, you have to work backwards.
Yeah, absolutely.
How many parking spaces you have, now you have how much square foot, so how you're going to use it. It's really backwards.
Here's a thought. If we could provide additional parking on the site, oh, not on the site, in a site adjacent to this site, is that something that's...
We always considered that, but you need a cross easement, because when we give you the approval, no matter what happens, that approval, that cross easement goes with your approval.
Gotcha.
It runs with the land, so it would have to stay with the project.
Understood, got it, got it.
Did I just hear you say that you're proposing tenant amenities on the ground floor of that commercial space?
By tenant amenities, it would be the overall lobby, mailroom, small gym for the tenants.
That's a problem, right?
Yeah, that's a problem. Because in the DMU...
In the DMU, the ground floor has to be commercial, has to be open to the public.
Is there...
Just the gym would be a problem? You could have obviously a lobby and a mailroom, but just not the gym?
That's true, you have a lobby and a mailroom.
Or the gym would have to be open to the public?
Or the gym's open to the public, okay.
Memberships, 250 a month.
Yeah.
Unless you live there. Unless you live there.
I mean, is there a formula or a ratio? Because like you said, you need to have a lobby, you need to have a mailroom. There's certain amenities that have to be there for a 54...
We could discount the lobby and discount the mailroom.
Sure, sure.
Or it's a commercial, it would be commercial, it'd be part of your commercial.
But it would be, parking-wise, percentage-wise, it wouldn't be part of the calculation there, I'd assume.
Not really.
Okay.
We're looking more at your apartments for parking.
This would make sense for it.
Yeah, it really would.
It's kind of set in stone there, too. But with something this big, it's a pretty substantial undertaking, getting this project off the ground, and there's a lot of different aspects that need to go into planning this. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to get this in front of you guys earlier, sooner rather than later, so we can start to... I think at the end of the day, this is a project that really would benefit Middletown when it's all finished. It helps a corner of Middletown that's... It helps a corner of Middletown that's- It's a corner of Middletown that I think needs a little bit of assistance, and this would help jumpstart it. I've always seen Middletown as a- Funny, double conversation. No, no, perfectly fine, but, you know, especially with what happened down in Downtown Village, and what's happening down on this side of North Street in particular, you're starting to see, uh, for lack of better words, a gentrification in these certain hotspots within Middletown. You know, our hopes is that this acts as a third anchor for, uh, a North Street renovation, per se. You know, it helps kinda realize the goals of the DMU and the purpose of putting that program out there.
I don't think anyone's disputing the benefit of the pro, we just got to make sure that we follow the rules, and we set it up for precedent for anyone else coming in any part of the city, so everyone, I think we're all on, on board with the idea, you know what I mean? I think that's great, it's, that's not the issue.
You're proposing market-rate apartments?
Yes.
So am I hearing that the concept is okay, we're just working on bargaining, kind of commercial spaces a little bit? It's a, it's a, just a bigger set, and what's on what happened here is, this organization fell with you, is taking over the project, this, this is one of our regional decisions.
So that, that's some of our older plans. Like I said, with this being a larger project, it's gone through some different iterations and, um, different considerations on how we treat the site and the overall design, so that's, uh, outdated at this point.
John, do you need to take a look at this, or?
At, at some point, yes. Um, we need to look at the site plan. I think they need to work out the parking and other issues first.
I'm gonna ask a stupid question, is it over an acre? It looks like it's close, you know? It's two point one five.
I didn't say it's over two acres.
Yeah, it's a little over two acres.
Okay, so we're gonna need a-
If they're disturbing more than an acre to put in the parking, yes, it looks like they will be.
They may be.
Yeah.
It's going to be close. All right, so send, uh, the plans to John, this way, and you might have to, to help us determine that, if they need a SWIP, going forward.
Right, yes.
Environmental impact, all nine yards.
Yep, they, yeah, they'll need the seeker form, at least, uh, at least a short form to start with.
Okay.
And probably, uh, probably gonna have to look at traffic.
Yep, I imagine.
It's part of this.
Yep.
I'm, I'm sure there'll be a few more things, once I see the plans, I can identify.
Okay, as a start.
That's what we're asking for.
Okay. Mr. Madden, any else? Mr. Burdo, Mr. Higby? Okay.
All right, well, thank you for your time tonight, I appreciate it.
Forge ahead.
Give you a preview.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
You're full of motions tonight, aren't you?
I'll second that.
Mr. Burdo has a second, all in favor? Aye.